All right, good evening. Welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, February 28th. The first item on our agenda is to approve the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes from the regular session of 3:14-13 and a special budget meeting of 3:20 2013, as well as the acceptance of warrants 39V13 and 38P13. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, our student rep, Cole.
Hi, how you guys doing?
Very well.
Good, how are you?
Good. So, next week is the middle school play, which everyone is getting ready for.
Yep.
We just had our last rehearsal before Tech Week, and it's all next week, so we're getting ready for that. It's gonna be really fun, gonna be a great show too, very talented kids. And, um, and that will be the fifth at 7:00, and then the sixth at 2:00 o'clock, so.
Do you have it, do you have Charlie Mendez taping it, Cole?
I don't know that.
Okay, check that out, because he would love to tape something like that, and the public would love to have the chance to see it.
Okay.
And how will people get tickets?
Um, I think we will be, either we're gonna be selling them both at lunch and at the door, or it's just gonna be just at the door. But I, if I'm not mistaken, we will be selling them at the middle school lunches.
Okay.
So, there's gonna be general seating too, so don't worry about, like, trying to find your seat, you can just sit anywhere, so. I'm trying to think what else.
Spring sports?
Yep, and spring sports, I mean, spring sports are underway, but nothing, no games. And, um, I thi- I think tryouts are done, everyone's on where they should be, and I don't, do we have any games yet?
Monday's our first game.
Monday's our first game.
The weather could, hopefully, will corroborate, some nice weather.
And any senior activities yet, or do you still have another month or so before?
Yeah, probably another month. I think the first senior activity that we have is senior showcase, which the student council is going to be running, and that's gonna be the second at 7:00, so that'll be really fun, so I can't wait to get all that stuff started.
You had the frolic last week?
Yes, we did, I forgot about that.
Oh, they all look so nice. They have the grand march, for those of you who are not familiar with how they do it, and they, they, the kids come across the stage, they get introduced, and then they, there's a picture opportunity, but it's so nice, 'cause they all look so.
And where do they have, where, where do they have, is it at the high school?
Yeah, it's in the gym, yeah. So the grand march was through the auditorium this year, just 'cause of weather and everything, and then we just go to the gym, and it was decorated.
Was it New York, was it a, New York theme?
Yeah, it was a New York theme. Night in the city, it was awesome, very, very good decoration, very good food too, so.
Excellent.
It's great. Important for students.
Alrighty, um, let's see, so moving right along, a public comment, is there anyone here from the public wishes to speak on an agenda item? Don't everyone rush? Okay, um, next up is the school building committee presentation. Ellie and Pat are here. So, just so.
Evening.
Good evening. Just so everyone knows, like, we, we have a rep to the school building committee, which is Rob, and the reason why Ellie and Pat are here is just because I thought it was important that the committee just kinda get kept apprised of what's going on. It's not mandatory, but it's just more that, you know, let's hear what's going on, and, you know, make sure, you know, that we're all on the same page, and you guys are moving so fast, I just thought it'd be nice for.
And there's certain milestones, usually when they, they come, it's, there's a new milestone, a new part of the phase or project that's done.
Actually, that is correct. We.
Yeah, no, and just, so we, we do have a rep that votes, but it's not, the school, and it sounds bizarre, but we don't have, the school committee doesn't have involvement with the school building project. As time goes on, we'll be more involved with, as it affects our budget and operations through Carol, so, but anyway, alright.
Well, thank you for allowing us this time to update you anyways. We just completed the design development phase, and it was submitted to MSBA during the month of February, and along with completing this phase, we had cost estimates that were done by the architect and also our owner project manager of municipal, and comparing both of these budgets, we're within 1% of our projected overall budget, and since we're only at 40%, that's considered really good, where, you know, everything's coming right in as it should, is really what that means. And, you know, Pat, I'm sure can even elaborate, but MSBA has not seen any issues with what was submitted. So what I do is, actually Carl, the architect, DRA, provided this little packet for me to hand out to you, and I'll just take you through it quickly, it will just give you a little update on the school itself. On the first page, you'll see a picture of the new school, where it will be. In the middle is where Pembroke is currently located, and when that building is removed, two fields will be placed in that spot, and actually, we're having a field discussion next week, next Wednesday, at 7:00 PM in the Pembroke Library. I posted a joint meeting with GAA, Parks and Rec, and Concom, in case anyone is interested in attending, to get some more community input into how these fields should be, the sizes.
And this is at Pembroke?
Pembroke Library at 7:00 PM, yes.
Next Tuesday?
Wednesday, April 3rd.
Okay.
Because, you know, the use of these fields is, is pretty townwide, and we wanna make sure that whatever we do is in keeping with the visions that these other committees in town have, and we have met with them in the past, so, you know, we, we do have a good feel for what they're looking for, and DRA will be bringing their landscape architect, the person who is doing all these field designs, to answer questions, but also to receive information from them and suggestions. And yesterday, we had a kickoff call with MSBA to start the middle high school project, which I'll let Pat fill you in on that after we finish the Pembroke project. So do you have any questions on the layout? Do you understand how this is, and the layout itself hasn't changed, you know, since we have brought plans to you before? So I'm just curious, because it seems to me these fields are a good distance from the school.
They are.
And, um, so kids going out at recess, because I know their recess times are so short, the amount of time that it's gonna take kids to get to a play area? They have a play area. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna lift this up so you can see.
Okay.
This area right here is the cafeteria.
Okay.
This whole brown area, in dark brown, and all up here, is actually a playground.
Okay.
And on this side is the projected playground for the kindergarten area.
Oh, great.
However, they certainly can, by just coming out of the cafeteria, walk over to the fields, that's something that the school will set up.
Okay.
I, I think a couple of things worth noting on this, in addition to those two locations, I'm gonna do a show and tell, because I think it'll be easier for you to follow. This is the current teacher parking lot, the existing road, so you drive in, here's the parking lot, and then it just continues on, so this whole area is what's new.
Right.
And the beauty of this is, all of the construction taken place will have minimal impact on school life. This loop, right here, is the bus loop, so the buses will not be intermingling with car traffic. This loop will bring you to the front of the building, this is a potential drop-off area for kids in the morning.
Okay.
So, so the traffic will flow this way, once you get to this point, it will be one way, and then the buses will just loop in that way. They'll be dropping off right here, next to this play area and the cafeteria, so the students will enter that way if they're in a bus. Okay?
What are the, just care, what are the red areas, the reddish brown?
That's play area.
Those are play areas.
So, like, okay. Actually, tho- the darker areas are the play structures.
Play structures.
That's the resilient material.
Yes.
Okay.
The surface is a little different. Alright, so that, so that shows you where the parking's gonna be, you can see that the queuing lines are gonna be much longer. Rob's been, I have to give kudos to Rob, he's been very instrumental in helping DRA answer questions, provide feedback, you know, his background's been invaluable, to this whole site thing, making sure that widths and sizes and placements and everything.
Islands.
Isle, Rob's not too popular with a few people on the islands, but they're gonna be beautiful. So, um, you know, a- and it's still ongoing, it is not done by any means, but the process, you know, as it's moving along right now, this is how it is. So, from this standpoint, from the outside area, do you have any other questions? Alright, the next few pages show the layout of the actual building. As you know, the first floor has a kindergarten wing on the right, that's a one-story building.
Okay.
And on the left will be potentially first and second grade, and in the middle will be the main offices. When you move up to the second floor, above the main office, you'll have the library, media area, and then the classrooms will host the potential third and fourth grade.
Second and third, brother.
Second and third, right, and then the next.
Nope, you're probably right.
No, I was at 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 and 6 on the third floor.
Yep.
And that's the only thing that will be on the third floor. So, one section of the building is gonna be three floors, the middle section is two floors, and the kindergarten area is one. Okay? The first, the first floor plan shows you that the, I'm gonna do a little show and tell, 'cause I think it'll help you read the plans better. This teal-blue will be the office layout, behind that will be the music stage area, and then this orange color is the cafeteria, and then behind that is the gym. So the location of the cafeteria, the gym, is going to allow the school really easy access to the outside after hours. The whole building can be cut off, every hallway can be locked up, anytime the building is used by the public, they just will not have any access to any part of the building other than what they've been designated. There's restrooms between the gym and the cafeterias, handicap accessibility over there, it should be pretty easy to get into. Do you have any questions on any of that? And then there are a few pages that give you an example of what the classrooms will potentially look like.
And are these like typical classrooms?
Yes, they are, yes. The front of the building has some bump outs, and in the kindergarten area, there'll be some shelving in there, they can be used for little quiet play areas, they can be used for a reading point, all of the rooms are gonna have these low bookcases, as you can see in this di- in this photograph underneath the windows, it'll be all open shelving for storage, teachers will be able to see what's in there, kids will be able to utilize them. Every classroom, in the kindergarten wing, will have its own toilet area, there'll be a picture further on that shows the cubbies that each classroom will have. Every classroom in the buil- every classroom will have a sink, every classroom in the building, is that correct? Has a sink.
That's correct.
Every classroom has a sink. Every classroom will have, I'm gonna refer to this picture because it's a good one, every teacher will have their own lock-in closet, some will have two. This is an example of what the sink area will look like, where there's a sink, there's storage above and below it. The room will be wired, obviously, for all the technology that the classrooms will need, there'll be one central location where the smart boards will be located.
Now Ellie, will all the doors have, have those windows?
Yes, and the, the, for security purposes, all of the doors will be able to lock from the inside, the teacher will have a special key that she can use, and will have to keep he or she will have and can lock the door in the case of an emergency.
And the windows are for what purpose, next to the door?
Just so you can see into the room. They're, they allow light in. Does, are you just curious, or?
I just think of safety, you know.
They're, they, the way the room is designed, even though you can see into them, there will still be many areas within the room where you could be out of sight, and I think maybe that's the question you might be leaning towards. So, the, this, the vision is usually just straight. We did.
You would either have, you would either have those side lights, or you would have a, a gla- a piece of glass in the door, so that when you open that door, you're not bullying somebody over, so one way or the other, you'd wanna be able to see someone approaching the classroom, either through the side lights or through a vision panel in the door.
Okay.
I think this look is definitely more modern.
Than the single pane.
Than the single pane.
At Pembroke right now.
I, when I go into newer schools, I don't notice that they have the, the windows like that on the side.
The side lights, right.
And, let me make sure they're in the same direction, the kindergarten layout, they showed you, there's set, each floor has different sized classrooms that can be used for breakout rooms, for special education purposes. And then, you know, the rest of the diagrams really are just different views of the building as you access it. So this is what you would see as your, this particular diagram is what you would see when you're driving up, and then this is the actual front entrance, so the office would be behind there.
Yep.
This bay of windows is the library, well, the lower ones of the office above it would be the library.
I like that gable by the front door.
You like that?
I really like that a lot.
Well, I like all the windows too.
A lot of discussion about the kind of roofs.
Yes, yeah.
The library, media area is gonna be beautiful. This is the building you'll see as you approach the main office for the drop-off. So this is the three-story, the two-story, and then the one. And you'll see the architect has used various elements to help bring the size of the building down, the bump outs, they work on colors and materials, just to change.
The massing isn't just.
Yes, it's not a, just a cinder block.
A block, you're right.
Get your tapestries there too.
Oh yeah, I didn't get to that last page.
Your tapestries are hanging in there as well.
When we, when you get to the pictures of the auditorium, you'll see they have.
A lot of care to make sure those are handled very appropriately.
They hung the quilts.
Oh!
And since my children can't rub it into these quilts, they're very near and dear to them.
They are beautiful quilts, they certainly are.
And they're a part, and this is, this is the cafitorium.
Pembroke history, their Pembroke identity.
And, you know, the arts are very important, and that was a, a project that was done with an artist in Rockport, and it, I believe it took a couple of years.
Love it.
The, the setup on that cafitorium is interesting, they're using the elevation of the school so that an elevator, our lift, won't be needed to put students on the stage, the platform. If you look right here.
Oh, there's a ramp going.
You can see there's a little bit of a ramp, and all students will access the cafeteria by coming down that incline, but the top of the incline actually is where the stages.
The access to the stage, very nice.
Handicap.
Yes, it was just well, that was very well thought out.
And no need for any technology for stuff like that, it's just very simple.
Exactly.
And it allows.
Students to be more freely interact with.
Hearing that's going on.
Do you have any questions on the building?
Just, I, I don't know if you've gotten to this stage yet, so, like, we have the, the renderings of what the outside is gonna look like, do we know cost-wise, if, if that's all achievable within our budget?
Yes, it always.
Okay.
And they've already started costing that out.
Okay, great.
Yep, that 40% includes everything.
Okay, alright, good.
Are we actually gonna have this little round architectural feature here, in the classrooms?
That is a photograph of a s- of who they have built.
Of a school, yeah.
So I think it depends on what ours look like, I, I need to find.
What was that, in the picture, that's right over here, I, I really like it, I think it, it gives.
Oh, this, oh yeah.
Students, children would like it.
Oh, that, yes, that's just a view into the.
But it makes it.
It adds character to the room. That, that particular photograph is a sample of a kindergarten classroom.
Yeah.
And those are the cubbies.
Nice having the cubbies in the classroom?
Yes.
I really like that.
That's pretty, that's pretty much standard today.
Oh, is it really?
For the, for the, for the younger grades, you use, do the cubbies right inside the classroom as opposed to the lockers outside.
There'll be lockers on everywhere else.
And we, 'cause right now, it, pearly, they're on the outside, or Pembroke.
They're on the outside.
They're on the inside, Pembroke, they're on the outside.
I thought kindergarten. They're on the outside, okay. Okay, that's what I remembered, okay.
And if you look at the floor, we're even looking at this type, the possibility of doing this type of patterning on the floor in the kindergarten area to make it cheerful and fun and colorful.
Right, right.
Give it character.
Yes, very nice. I like that you have pictures of other model schools, that's nice.
Carol and I have been discussing that we would like to go take a ride to a few of these schools, so we can see the materials in person.
Right.
And see how they're wearing.
I have vision issues, so it's nice to be able to kinda say, "Oh, you can do it this way."
Check out the shiny materials.
I know, Rob, I'm still loving shiny floors.
If you don't have any other questions, I think this would be a good opportunity for Pat to just run through the schedule of what we can expect, and also then maybe touch on the start of the middle high school.
As far as the schedule is concerned, we're right on, right on target. We're all done with the MSBA board meetings, there are no more votes necessary at the MSBA board, we're all done with that aspect of it, but MSBA is just as concerned as everybody else to make sure we stay within the scope and the budget. The, the town has signed a scope and budget agreement with MSBA, and they take that very serious, and they want you to stay within the scope, and they want you to stay within the budget, and for that reason, there are, since the time we signed that scope and budget agreement, there were three other submissions that are made to MSBA to show that we're on target with the schedule, with the scope, and with the budget. We recently, as Ellie mentioned, we recently submitted the design development, and it was, and there's actually, anybody that wants to take a look at it, it's very substantial, it's a loosely book about two inches thick, along with the, the plans, they're all in Mike Farrell's office, so that's what's been submitted to MSBA with estimates prepared by our estimator, and, and estimates prepared by the architect's estimator, and that we're compelled to reconcile those and make sure they're, they're within a certain tolerance. That's been submitted, and that design packet that is downstairs represents about 40, 45% of the documents that have to be prepared to put this out to bid. MSBA requires that we submit a 60% complete set, that is scheduled to be submitted in May, in May we'll submit the 60% set to MSBA. We've gotta do, we've gotta go through a whole series of estimates, the architect has to do estimates, there's a whole new packet prepared, and between now and then, the documents are advanced and also refined, and any other minor modifications can be made during that period of time. That could get submitted to MSBA, and each time we submit to MSBA, they come back with, with questions or comments. We just answered the questions and comments that they submitted to us back about two weeks ago, and those went back in, and they're generally speaking, they're questions about, you know, this may not be sufficiently complete, are you gonna pick that up in the 60%, and it goes back and forth. In, in June, we submit the 90% set, so in June, we have to submit a 90% set and go through the whole exercise again, any other refinements that get picked up, estimates are done again, so again, this is all in keeping with assurances that the project is staying on budget and staying within the scope and is staying on schedule. The ju- the documents will be complete, and then it'll go out to bid early September, end of August, early September, and the next thing is, obviously, the numbers come in, and we'll know what the real number is for the job, job is, and with the scrutiny that's being placed every step of the way, we anticipate we'll be, we should be in good shape for all of it, so the schedule's in good shape, the budget's in good shape, all of the, the mechanics are in place to deliver everything on time. From a budget standpoint, as Ellie mentioned, I mean, we're right, we're right within a very narrow period of time with regard to the budget, with regard to the tolerance involved, the, so, I mean, it, this, this particular submission was, was very well received by MSBA. There were very few questions that they had, and we're moving right along in accordance with the, the schedule and with the budget.
So, that's great news.
Yeah.
One of the questions that I had was, so, there's a check and balance in there where we submitted to MSBA what we wanted this new project to look like, how many grades it would have in it, what type of other amenities it would have in it, so now that you're going through the process, by submitting at different milestones, that precludes you from saying, "You know what, glad we got the funding, we're cutting it down to a K to four, and we're gonna add another basketball court," or something like that, so that's, that's a good check and balance, so everyone at home should rest assured that what we submitted, what we told people we were gonna develop, we are in fact developing to exactly.
That's exactly right.
Right.
What we said, so that.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
That, and we're within budget at this point, at 40%.
Yeah, correct, correct.
Alright.
And the date of break ground would be?
November, early November, yeah, yeah.
Of 2015.
No, to break ground.
Break, 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 I thought you meant completion.
No, completion was 2015.
That's correct, 15, that's right. That's right, break ground is November, which is pretty soon.
November is coming soon.
Yeah, yeah, that's what they're saying, yeah, they're saying school year 2015.
That's right, starting in September, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know, that's gonna be exciting day.
Yeah, sure will be.
Oh, yes, it will. Oh my goodness.
I'm gonna get re-certified in elementary.
You have two years to do that.
Yeah, but I have four to retire, so.
Any questions on the Pembroke? I was gonna just run through the middle high school.
Absolutely.
If you recall, MSBA, when they came up, because the sixth grade was moving into the Pembroke, they were very, they're always very concerned about what are you gonna do with the rooms that are, that you're gonna be vacating, and that led into a whole series of discussions with them, they came up and visited the school, and they really required, as part of the scope and budget agreement that was signed at the time, they required that we do the, we do the work that's necessary to do the capital improvements to accommodate the new areas and do some other repairs into the school, and that was all approved as a separate warrant, and it's actually all tied together with MSB, so this project is moving along in conjunction with that particular directive. It's being done as a completely separate project by MSBA and a separate warrant by, by the town. The interesting thing is that the MSBA actually invited the project in, because there was a question about what will they, what will they reimburse, and will they reimburse, and, well, actually, MSBA was very gracious, because they said, "Come on into the reimbursement program." So we are, the whole project has been pulled in as a separate project with a reimbursement that's 50.9%, so again, like I said, it eliminates any questions about will they reimburse it, so they're gonna be reimbursing 50% of the things that MSBA normally reimburses, we all know that there are certain things that they don't reimburse, but majority of the project will be reimbursed by MSBA.
Can I just say one thing, and I don't mean to cut you off, but I think it's important that everyone knows that that was a fast track compared to what it took us to get into the MSBA pipeline for Pembroke. We had to go through a long, I mean, we had a lengthy application process.
I think our statement of interest, I think, went in in '08?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, '08.
Or less, yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, we, we were very lucky.
The first one was '06, I believe, the first one was '06, it was denied, and then we did. When I came in '07, it was on hold.
Yep, so.
And we didn't even write a statement of interest for this project.
That's right.
They said to us, "You need to do this, come and do it."
Right, so, I mean, we should be thankful that.
Right.
We've been afforded the opportunity.
Yes.
To get there quickly.
And, and when, when we submitted, in, in July, when we submitted, because they wanted to see exactly what the game plan was for the, the middle high school, they've actually considered that to be part of the feasibility study, that what you would normally submit after you've been invited in, after you were approved at the board, after you went through the whole process, after you went through a whole selection of architects and, and, and OPMs, so you've actually picked up a couple of years is what it boils down to.
Right, that's what I thought everyone.
Exactly, so you didn't have to go through an eligibility period, they took that all in at the same time, so they, they were, they were really very cooperative in making sure that you addressed those. So they, they were, they were really very cooperative in making sure that you addressed those areas that had to be addressed. And with that, there's been a feasibility study that's been executed with the, with the MSBA. That's all set, all signed, sealed and delivered. They've, they've already authorized the contracts to be signed with the OPM and with ourselves and with DRA. So we're underway, we actually are actually working on the arrangements and we had a kickoff meeting with them this week and we went through a whole agenda with them to go through the issues and basically what it boils down to is that there are two board meetings required by MSBA because there's always a feasibility study, preferred alternative board vote and then there's a schematic board vote where they fix the dollars and we fix the cost of the job and the scope. And then that's the last, that's the last vote that they would have and then it go, would go to town meeting next, next May. But right now, we are looking to submit the feasibility study on the eighth of August for their board meeting on October the second. And what, what's gonna happen in the interim period now is there'll be meetings now with DRA and administration to go through exactly what's gonna happen, they're gonna take what we, we're gonna take what we did already for the submission that occurred last, last summer and that now is gonna be looked at and will be dissected, the existing conditions will be looked at. Again, in keeping with what was originally laid out from a capital improvement standpoint and from a repair standpoint. And they'll, they'll be in contact very shortly with setting up meetings with Carol and the staff and obviously we'll be briefing the building committees as we go forward. That'll actually, once that gets approved by the board, from a feasibility standpoint, then it'll be refined and it'll get prepared and then in February of fourteen, it'll be submitted, the schematic design, complete with all of the actual hard costs and everything else and schedules, will be submitted to the board and they will hear that in April and they will vote on it in April. But we will have submitted it by February, so the numbers and everything else will be ready for town meeting, it's just that the board will act on in April. They'll have a board, we'll have a board vote in April, we'll have the numbers in February so that the town has them available for discussion and dissemination to the public and then that'll go to town meeting for authorization. And at that point, we'll get into the same level we're into, at this point, we'll be going through the design development, we'll be going through the sixty, through the ninety and obviously be looking to get the construction done during any period of time that we can squeeze some of the work in depending on what we're gonna be doing. Some of it might be done during the summer months, some of the work might be done during the course of vacation periods. So it depends on where we go with the level of, of work that's gonna be done. Of, most of which has been laid out, but again, it's all subject to looking at the scope and what the, what the structure's gonna need to accommodate the reconfiguration of the classrooms.
And really identifying the costs. You know, calling, calling some original estimates, like just projected costs.
Yeah.
But, you know, nothing that was really nailed down and this process is gonna really nail it down.
So the middle high school schedule is in good shape as well.
Right.
There's a good action plan and it's.
Lot of work.
There's a lot of work to be done.
Very encouraging for the education in Georgetown. When is the, when is it supposed to be done, the completion?
We, the, right now, the target is to obviously have those, the rooms that are gonna be vacated. You'd like, you'd like to have those done by September of fifteen because again, you're gonna be accommodating, you know, the, the new you wanna have that ready so that when you move the students out, you're gonna be doing a lot of work probably that summer to make the accommodations to take care of the new enrollment in the middle high school.
Now, would there be any, any change in like the schedule for the, for the students? Now, I know some districts have done that where they actually changed the, the school day to accommodate like the construction or the, the workers, you know?
I don't think we've been thinking that.
We haven't really gone that deeply because the original packet that was submitted was generally speaking, a, a, just a broad brush as to what was gonna happen.
Right.
It's pretty well detailed considering it was supposed to be just a broad brush, it was a lot more detailed than that. If you look at the packet that was submitted, it's, it's pretty extensive. So it's a good starting.
We'll have to look at that.
It's a good starting point, but those are all things that'll be looked at.
So could you remind me again when the money would be appropriated potentially from the town? Start.
May of fourteen.
Yeah, year from now.
Yeah.
So that's a, a year.
A year from now.
I know, I, I'm, what I'm trying to wonder is, because this would need to be sort of phased. You know, there'd probably be some elements of the project that could start right away.
Right.
As soon as the money, you know, through the summer.
Yeah.
And then obviously we'd have to strategically look at the kinds of things we would do while the students were there.
Exactly, yeah, exactly, exactly.
So yes, there will be some real thinking that has to happen.
Did you all wanna talk about the planning board vote that we took just as an important vote to fill the committee in on that or? I'll just share with you.
Go ahead.
My tip on it.
Okay.
Basically, there, I think there was a very, as, as the rep on, on the committee, there was a very important vote to go in front of the planning board or not for site plan review. And that vote was taken on March twelfth and it was a five to three vote in favor of going to the planning board for review. And then, and correct me if I've got anything wrong. And then there was, due to a potential open meeting law violation in the first vote, there was a second meeting rescheduled and a revote was taken. And that time it was five to four against going to the planning board with one abstain. And I, I think that, and I strongly disagreed with, with that, but what I, I fully support the vote today of where it's at and I think what is going to happen to try to achieve some of the goals of going to the planning board, not going to the planning board, is that there's, there's a number of people who are gonna start identifying some important tasks to get a second set of eyes reviewing the project on, which is what the planning board is about in many ways. So it was an important vote and I just wanted to share that with the committee.
You explained that very well. And, and I think it's also important to note that it was always the intent of the building committee to go informally before the planning board. The state doesn't require us to do that, however, the state does require that we go before the conservation commission. And the conservation commission and the planning board do use the same engineer. And that was the procedure that we would use and as Rob is saying, you know, if we need to expand any of the studies that the engineer does, then we will. Well, you know, we're gonna do what we need to do to make sure that things are done correctly.
And I think it's, I mean, and this is just the way that I'm seeing it, I have no idea if this is true. Or I think, I believe it is true, but it seems like there's a lot of oversight and scrutiny going on at the MSBA level and throughout the process with the architects and the OPM so that a lot of, I'm not saying it, the planning board shouldn't look at it and, and doesn't have the ability to look at it, but it is getting the level of scrutiny that it requires.
And, and I also think it's important to understand the vote was to not file an official site application. The vote was not to not go to the planning board and there is, you know, that is very different. So, yes, the, by you, by going to the conservation commission, by informally going before the planning board, we are asking for them to also review the work that the engineers that we have hired as a town, we've hired DRA to hire engineers and it's just to double check the work that they do. And, and that's basically what this engineer will do.
And, and just to, I think, clarify a little bit on what Ann was saying. The, the, the second set of eyes for the site plan portion, the site engineering portion, that is what I think we're going to be looking at in this list and that is what the planning board would have done. And in this list, we're looking to address those issues that way. So that would be the second set of eye review of that part of the process.
So I just wanna thank everyone because I've just felt very fortunate to be working with this incredible group. The, the board, the, the building committee is selfless, I've been so happy. You know, people, e- e- even Rob just said it, you know, he may not have supported the vote but, you know, is wholeheartedly working and I, I have just found that every step of the way with everyone on the committee, that people are just really stepping up because they feel it's the right thing to do for the town and for the school and that makes what we do, I think, really worthwhile.
Well, thank you for all of your efforts for the, I believe, the decade of work that's gone into this.
Decade, that is correct. That is correct. And I, she'll retire when it's done.
And she will have no children that will be attending the school.
No, my children are juniors in college.
Early out of the goodness of your heart, so thank you.
So thank you.
But everybody, it's a lot of time and a lot of effort and it's for the right reason.
Thank you for recognizing that.
And all of you also.
Thank you, thank you for the honor of working with you.
Any other questions for us? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Bye.
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 Alright, moving right along, the school calendar?
I'm wondering if we can move Chris up.
Do you guys mind if we move? Committee mind if we do a little footplop and we move Chris for the winter sports report?
That would be great. A lot of the budget and finance, I think it was a budget and finance group at our subcommittee meetings when we were talking to Chris about athletic fees and, you know, future sports and all the other topics we were trying to cover in that meeting. I think the suggestion was made that, wouldn't it be great if Chris, as the athletic director, at the end of every season, could maybe come before the committee and, and let us, you know, an update on the season be, the seasons before. So right away, Chris said, sure, I'll be happy to do it and then I think two days later, he said, here's my report, so I really appreciate that. That's one of Chris's strengths, he's a very organized person and he, he, he does what, he doesn't, he goes, he exceeds the expectations. But anyway, this is Chris's first report and he's gonna just review with you some things about the winter sports season, right?
And a little preview for the spring.
And a preview for the spring.
So, we had some pretty good accomplishments in the winter. Our girls' basketball team qualified for the state tournament and they won an opening round game. They lost to Whittier in the second round who actually ended up in the north final, so.
Great accomplishment.
Cheering won the division four north title, which is really impressive. They also finished fourth in the state at their level, so.
That's fantastic.
Really good job with Cheering. Our boys' basketball team had an all-league player, Patrick Bjork, they also had an all-star player in Matt Gott. Girls' basketball had two all-league players, Kristen Hogan, who we also did the final tally on, finished her career with eleven hundred and ninety-six points. Her name's gonna go up on our thousand point banner very soon.
Great, that's terrific.
And Marissa Aganis was also an all-league player. We also had an all, an all-star in Ellie Newberry, so that was pretty good for them. Wrestling had multiple wrestlers with strong showings at Cal's and many of them moved on to states. And we actually have a co-op program with Ipswich, so some of the kids were from Ipswich, some of the kids were from Georgetown. One of the Georgetown wrestlers had his hundredth career win this year, David Ingramham. So that's a pretty big accomplishment. About five or six other wrestlers in our history that have made that, so.
Is he a senior?
He's a senior, yeah.
Okay.
And then our JV boys' basketball coach Barry Spears, who has been with us for eight years, announced his retirement. He, he actually won the KPN League Assistant Coach of the Year award this year as well. So he was really recognized for his years of service and really helping out, so we're gonna miss him.
For a high school with a hundred students per class roughly, or four hundred, a little over four hundred in the high school, it's impressive.
It really is, yeah.
It's a lot of, it's a lot of teams that are represented, it's nice to see.
Yeah, and our, although they're not officially co-ops anymore, our Ipswich track and field, both boys and girls, so our, our athletes who ran for them the year before were grandfathered in. And so the ones that went out for the team, they actually won the boys' and girls' KPN League. So we had some Georgetown athletes represented there as well and we are actively looking for a co-op, so I know.
A track co-op?
Yeah, it's just, it's tough to find a school that has a facility.
And not enough students.
Doesn't have enough students to field a team, so.
When I look at wrestling, with six Georgetown and eleven Ipswich, what's the number that when they get to, we kind of go away?
I think it's, well, I wouldn't say go away.
When it can no longer be considered a co-op because they're gonna cut, because there's enough people. Yeah, exactly.
Wrestling, I think if you, if you were in the thirties.
Okay, alright.
Wrestling has a ways to go.
Yeah, because there's all these different weight classes and there's a lot of opportunities for kids, so I'm not, I'm not worried about it going that way, I'm actually worried about it going the other way.
Okay.
That our numbers are going down in wrestling.
They are, okay.
And, and then we had the Penn Tucket ice hockey team on co-op.
And they're still.
There's a lot of Georgetown players in that.
Yeah.
That was very successful, both varsity and, and junior varsity.
Absolutely, and they're still a viable team, our girls' hockey team with Maskeen Ahmet qualified for the state tournament, so.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
There's a great write-up in the paper about one of the players.
Yeah, Katie Turbin.
Yeah, that was really nice.
Yeah, so it, it's great that those kids have an opportunity to play, although we're not the host school, they still.
But we provide a lot of their players.
Absolutely.
Which is good, that makes me. I went to the banquet, actually the ice hockey co-op had a banquet on Monday night and it sounded like they were ready to welcome us in for a long time to come, so that made me happy.
Two of our players are captains.
Yeah, my son is on the junior varsity, was on this year, so, Jeff.
So it was great. Participation numbers, pretty good, Cheering, it was twenty-four, although we did have to dip into the eighth grade to get a competition team, once we did that, our numbers went way up, so I think we had eighty eighth graders who came out. But, you know, we'd prefer not to do that if we don't have to. So twenty-four is a good number.
Why we do, I mean, that's, yeah.
It's why the waiver exists.
That's why, yeah, that's why, I was looking for the word.
Wrestling, seventeen, we only had one eighth grader, Ipswich counts on eighth graders, the way the waiver rule works.
Okay.
So it can only be Georgetown kids, so we had one that was there. And as you can see though, the numbers are six and eleven, so we're really hoping those numbers go up. Cause it's, it's a fun program, it's, if you've ever been to a match, it's really one of the best experiences of high school sports.
It's the craziest thing.
They love being at Pearly for the matches because you can stand up on that mezzanine, you know, and it's loud there, they really.
I say crazy in that I'm used to being able to, you know, follow a score and you can see, you know.
Oh, no, yeah, you have to watch the.
And you really have to pay attention, otherwise it's over before you realize it started.
It was great, our cheerleaders came to two of our home matches and cheered the boys on, so that was a really neat touch.
Oh, great.
That's great.
Girls' basketball, we only ran three levels this year, we didn't have enough girls for a freshman team, so we had forty-three amongst the three. So we're hoping those numbers go up a little bit and we can get a freshman team next year. And the boys, we had fifty, which was a good number, able to support four levels. And we're just hoping that sustains itself, so we had a hundred and twenty-four winter athletes, which is about average, looking at years past.
Okay.
Doing alright. There's a rundown of the records, you can feel free to look at that. On the next page, some concerns, one is obviously to throw off our winter and spring tracks. The MIA is not allowing us to re-up because the Ipswich numbers are good, which is great for them, I mean, it's, the point of a co-op is to build your program but the other team sometimes loses out on that, so we are actively looking for other teams that might be able to take us in. It's just, it's a challenge, there's not a lot out there. I can't name the school, but I can tell you a school about forty minutes away told us, oh yeah, we'd love you and that doesn't work, so. So geography is an issue.
How many kids do we have?
We had, in winter track last year, we had three. And then outdoor, we had ten. So it's not like we have huge numbers that, you know, we could start our own team, we were just not at that.
Yeah, well, remember, we're nestled, we're nestled amongst all these big regionals who have enough kids for their teams. It's rare that, in our, in our immediate proximity that we're gonna find a small school that doesn't have enough.
And we're a small high school, we are small.
Chris, I bet if you had a track, if you had a facility, you would have a lot more people on the team.
Well, the other concern though is that we don't wanna kill our other programs.
I was gonna say, but.
You know, I agree, but also.
But I think a track, if, if we had a track, that would be all for it.
Sounds very true.
And even, you know, worst case, we have our middle school track program running right now, which is very successful. But we can't run it, we can't have a home meet.
Right, but you're right, we can't have a home meet.
So again, our winter track co-op and spring track co-op, losing those is, it's gonna sting a little bit and we're, we're looking and we're trying. Our freshman basketball numbers were low in both genders, all of our freshman girls moved up to JV or varsity. Our boys, I think we had nine or ten on the team, so it's one of those things where the strongest freshmen do end up moving up and with us not being able to use the eighth graders anymore, that, you know, that's how we usually used to fill our teams, so.
Right.
So it's, it's a difference, wrestling we mentioned before and then cheering, again, trying to build that up a little bit. One of the big things that I've learned from cheering is that with the competitions, the tumbling is a really big factor. So a lot of the kids who might be into gymnastics should really be encouraged to go out for cheering because the competition, there's a lot of gymnastics involved. And I don't know if everyone realizes how athletic they are and how competitive. And I don't know if everyone realizes how athletic they are and how competitive it is, so.
Did you see Revere?
I didn't.
National champ.
Oh, were they? I didn't realize that.
Cheer.
That's amazing.
My daughter will be thrilled.
Nope.
National champ.
It's quite.
Those kids are huge.
So, if we look at our revenue, um, pretty good shape. We made thirty, about thirty-five thousand dollars in user fees. Um, we're still, um, have a little bit outstanding, and that is an obligation that a student, if they don't pay their user fees, they can't go to frolic or prom or graduate, so those eventually come in, uh, sometimes you have to chase people down a little bit. And then, our gates, um, in the fall, we have.
Is that about ten kids? I mean, I mean, when you look at it, how?
Yeah, it's usually, uh, ninety, I'd say ninety percent of the time, it's someone who started the user. Uh, we do a payment plan where they break into three, they miss their second, or they miss their third.
Okay.
Um, our gates, we, we have three sports to charge gates, um, football in the fall and then boys and girls, basketball. And if we average five thousand dollars between, you know, per sport, we, that's what, what we wanna do. And we're at ninety-six hundred, so we're right there. Yeah, so we did pretty well there. So, about forty-eight thousand dollars once those fees are collected, um, for the winter, which is pretty good. And then, I have a little spring sports preview, just to.
Yeah.
Know what's going on. Um, so we started tryouts, uh, amidst some snow and, uh, we had to be really flexible in the gym. Um, having indoor practices, we utilized some of the hallways for running and, you know, it's, it's not ideal, but we got through. Um, our numbers are up in almost every sport, which is great. Yeah, we, um, we're finally getting outside. Uh, we don't have the official rosters yet, so, I don't can't tell you the exact numbers, but we'll know pretty soon. Um, and we've got some really exciting teams, um, baseball, defending state champions. Uh, Coach Spur would not say he's a defending state champion, say, we're just another team trying to win a championship, so. He's, but he's really excited and those kids are really, you know, looking forward to a great run. Uh, softball, they actually, they were able to get out and have a scrimmage today at Pingree. Um, I haven't got the results of that yet, but they, um, they're, have a really good senior core, but they also have a lot of really solid younger kids, so. It's looking, um, bright for softball, their numbers are up a little bit from last year, so they're moving in the right direction. Um, boys lacrosse, um, they are looking to make the state tournament as always. Um, last year, they were the, uh, MIA sportsmanship award winner too at, at their division, which is a pretty big deal. So, that was kinda neat, and we hope they maintain that.
Can you just tell a little bit more about the sportsmanship?
Absolutely, so, at, um, at the league level, every league nominates one team for great sportsmanship. And we were able to win that, um, last year. And then all of those teams, all the leagues together, um, those teams are nominated. And our, our school actually won.
Very cool.
Wow.
It's a pretty big honor. Um, Coach Bobble was also our coach of the year, um, in, uh, lacrosse last year in the KPN League, so he got his award. At a pretty recent ceremony.
That says a lot.
Yeah, definitely, he's doing a great job. And then our girls' lacrosse, um, after many, many years, um, Coach Hartford has retired. And we have.
No chance of getting her to come back?
She's moved.
But we have a great, great, great new coach.
I saw that in the paper.
Yeah, so Bridget Lane, um, formerly of Maskinumit in Andover. Um, so she had been a JV coach and an assistant varsity coach. She played at Fairfield College, um, in Connecticut, so. And she is like, so into it, the kids really seem to love her, um, and I think the program's going in the right direction, so.
I've built that program, I'm so happy. She was so worried that she really getting a great coach and she, she's just gonna be so happy.
Yeah, and some, uh, Maureen Cannon's still helping out, John Pingree's helping out.
So happy for her.
We have a new JV coach too, a, a teacher in the school, Courtney Arigo, so, there's a nice connection to the school, so. Yeah, so there's a little bit of old, a little bit of new, and I think they're gonna have a very good season. And then middle school track, um, gets up and going on Monday, so they'll be able to run outside, I hope.
Yes, great. Just a couple of questions. So, baseball, you have the two teams, you're able to field two teams?
RSD and JV, absolutely.
Right, okay, so what about softball?
We did, we were able to.
You were able to do both?
Yeah, we have twenty-four girls.
Okay, perfect.
Which last year, we actually had, I believe, twenty, so.
Yeah, I remember last year.
We had two teams with twenty and there were a couple of games where we couldn't field the JV team.
Okay.
Injuries or a girl gets called up.
Okay.
So, the numbers are going in the right direction there.
Um, and then what about lacrosse? Do you do a JV and a varsity?
We do, yeah.
Boys and girls?
Yep, the numbers are good. We do utilize the eighth grade waiver, uh, cause we'd be right on the brink of not being able to have a JV team.
Okay.
When you add in the eighth graders, we're at eighteen, so, which is right where you wanna be.
Great.
Yeah. So, things are going in the right direction.
Great to hear.
Thank you, Chris.
I love your organization.
No, thanks.
And so, so we're predicting like a few tournament runs through here, do you have this?
We like banners.
Okay.
We still have a little room left.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks for your patience.
Good luck. Alright, um, school calendar?
Okay, so in your packet, uh, I give you some information in your orange notes, uh, and a copy of the draft calendar. Um, you've already approved the starting date of school next year being after Labor Day, so we don't need to revisit that. Hopefully, we're gonna have a little easier winter next year, so we're not in the situation we're in this year, which is being in school till the twenty-sixth. But.
So, do we have seven school days this year?
Mother nature, unfortunately.
How many school, uh, snow days?
Six, six snow days, five snow days.
Okay.
But remember, the governor called two, there were two emergencies that the governor had called two, so that's.
Yeah, we had a hurricane.
Yeah. So, anyway, so starting after Labor Day, um, I just, what I call, usually this is a very traditional kind of calendar that we have. Um, we include here, obviously, parent-teacher conferences, full day in-service days. Um, and, uh, this year, the addition, and I think I talked about this briefly, that we were gonna come back to you and have this conversation. Um, it may not yield a vote tonight, but I would like to suggest we do try to reach a, a, an agreement on the April eleventh meeting. Only because it does, if it's approved as presented, it does have some impacts to some families. And I wanna give them as much time as possible to make arrangements. Um, so going through, um, the, sort of the hi, the highlights, I think is what's important is, um, we need, we would like your input into this. We look at the month of December, where Christmas falls this year. Uh, is in the middle of the week. So, our recommendation is that we, uh, attend, that school is in session for a half a day on the twenty-third, it counts as a school day. The students leave half-day, and that's a professional development day for the teachers in the afternoon. Um, that would mean that the students would leave at twelve and then they'd be off, and if you go to New Year's, generally speaking, you would expect to see kids come the day after New Year's, just for the, for the week. But given the fact that it's, you know, middle of the week and kids would only be there, there for two, um, for two days, plus, you know, really, Christmas Eve comes pretty close after that, after that, um, if we're leaving on the twenty-third half-day, we thought that the families might appreciate having the opportunity to have those two days as part of the vacation. So then, students would return in January on the sixth.
Two weeks.
It ends up being two weeks, yeah.
And, and why, I'm just curious, why have the students go to school at all on the twenty-third?
Well, we were trying to count, but we, we had that conversation and that's certainly something we can revisit. Originally, it was not, there was nothing on that day. Um, but when we started to look at, because we're going after Labor Day and we started looking at the, the day we would get out and then the possibility of snow days.
We do a class party, right, all the classes, at least the lower grades.
Yep.
They're going to have that either on the twentieth or on the twenty-third.
Right.
The kids, in, in terms of their attention span, it's.
Right, well, that's why it would be a half a day, right?
They're not gonna learn anything that.
I could, I would argue going to school on the second and third and take the twenty-third off, but I mean, I, it.
I just, yeah, and I think anybody who's gonna go away.
Yeah, they're not gonna wait for that.
It depends on where it falls, Rob. It depends on where it falls.
We're in like the perfect nightmare.
Yeah.
Having, having them in the middle of two weeks, that's, but.
What do you, what do you mean it depends on where it falls?
Well, well, if, if it's in the middle, if it was a Monday, then it make, you make different choices.
Yeah.
You know?
It depends, yeah.
Closer it gets to the mid to the end of the week, then it becomes a little more difficult to say, really, are you gonna? We have this conversation when we, I remember this vividly, this conversation when we talked about when kids start school. And we were adamant at the committee level that they shouldn't come for two days, that that was kind of a waste of time. Why would we do that? Um, so, that's part of, we did think about that when we had our conversations. Of course, new committee, maybe new feeling on that. But, you know, you figure that when the students come back, I mean, they're there for two days. I mean, some families might appreciate the fact if they're traveling that they, they know, they would know that they had the rest of that week.
Or they're all at home right now throwing things at the TV, going, two weeks, what are they talking about?
Well, usually, it's, it is, it usually it's ten days.
Well, the year before last was long, and it wasn't two weeks, but people thought it was long.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah.
When you say two weeks, do you mean in ten days, that's one of the same, right?
Uh, well, you count the, yeah, we're counting the weekends. We're counting the weekends when we do, but generally, it's ten, ten to eleven days.
Yeah, I mean, it's not precisely, but it really, when you look at it, it's two weeks.
But again, from our perspective, we just thought that it made sense, a little better acad, you know, academic sense to not have the kids coming back, but, you know, again, that's why we're having this conversation, right?
I'm just so worried about this summer.
So, yeah, just from the student perspective, I know, like, from my own experience and just like observing other students, they kinda clock out, um, by that last week before. And so, having a half-day, either families who wanna go away, they're not gonna wait. They're not gonna wait for that half-day to end, or like, um, to go away. They'd probably go away on that Friday or something and go two weeks somewhere, which is, I mean, fine, but that's why I think attendance would be very low on that half-day. Even just kids being like, I don't wanna go to school today, I, we have vacation for two weeks. I know that's definitely a possibility of happening.
To Alan's point, it's probably like, oh, well, that's fine, cause it's gonna be, you know, wrap up the term or have a, a final.
Right, I mean, again, I can't speak to the middle and high school, but for, if I was gonna go away and I saw this school calendar, I would, and in past other years, if you're traveling, you often end up traveling on the twenty-fourth, which is the worst day of the year to fly anywhere.
Except for the day before Thanksgiving.
I could fly on the twentieth.
Right.
It's just a half-day on the twenty-third.
Right.
No, I, I, I totally understand.
I don't think there's a.
I don't think we have a, I don't think we have a, the administration has a really strong, I mean, we, we can have that be a, a half-day. I mean, a, a day off. I think the, part of the other thing that we were trying to weigh also is we have this additional six hours.
Right.
And we were, that we were gonna use that as one of the days. So, I mean, again, that's not, that's not a major factor, we can work around that. But that was a factor when we were thinking about it, is that a, would allow us that afternoon. But, but again, our staff would prefer to have the day off, I, I.
Yeah, my thinking is to have the twenty-third be part of the vacation and have the kids come back on the second. And then you pick up two days there, right? You have the second and the third, could be school days.
Um, sure.
And.
They could be that, but again, I, I'm just sharing with you what our, what our thoughts were on that.
Yeah.
On why the second and third were, it, we didn't see it as being, it was gonna be all that, as much, as productive. And our thought was that families might appreciate having that extra time. You're telling me that you don't.
Well, it's probably gonna be, I bet, you know, if we did a poll, that half the families would prefer the twenty-third off and half of them want the second.
That's, you never, the calendar is not something that a hundred percent of anybody's gonna love.
A lot of people who are gonna travel with young, if they have young kids, they're gonna wanna stay home for Christmas, so they would appreciate the next week to travel. I mean, it's.
I mean, I think you can go either way.
Either way.
Exactly.
I have a question for you guys. Since you guys, since there are professional development days, certain number that you'd need.
Yes.
Um, would you be able to move one of them to either the second or the third to make up for lost time?
We did have that conversation as well, um, but then you'd only have the children, yeah, are you, I just wanna make sure I understand what you're asking, Paul. Would the kids still come back aft, in, on the second and the third, or you're saying, use one of them as a PD?
Yeah, and then take one of the ones, say, in a later or earlier month out, so you have that day.
Yes, we, yes, we could do that.
Yeah.
I'm not suggesting this, but you have one on October fifteenth, so take, and I'm not saying, I'm just as an example, you'd say, cut the fifteenth out.
I wouldn't take the October fifteenth because of the nature of what I know we're gonna do, but I hear what you're saying is make a, make a switch. We could, we could.
Just if you were, cause since you're starting after Labor Day, you, and since you, you never know what you're gonna get for winter.
Right.
Um, you wanna make sure that you have enough days at the end to make sure that, like, say you get five snow days, you're not going into July, kinda thing, so.
We can't go into July.
Right, you can't.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so, it sounds like the committee would like us to consider not having school on the twenty-third. Having that be a, a no-school day.
Questions?
Is that what I'm, is that what I'm hearing?
I, I'm more the second and third that they should go back to school.
Well, I hear that, but I'm wondering about the twenty-third.
Twenty-third. Yeah, the twenty-third, I think it's, should be no-school.
I would tend to side that way.
I like it just the way you presented it.
Okay, but I think you're in the minority here, Pam, from what I can tell.
Yeah, and I actually, I like the idea of, of taking the January twenty-first professional development day and moving it up to January second or third, simply because after you've had this long vacation with your kids home, who wants a four-day weekend two weeks later? And we already got half, a three-day weekend.
Good point.
And then to, I mean, I'm sure there's families perhaps who love the snow and see that as an opportunity to go away skiing for a long weekend, but, but, that's, that's my thought, is we just had this long break and now I have to have another four-day weekend.
You know what, you bring up a good point, cause you have the twenty-first, then you have a half, then, two weeks later, you have a half-day.
In the middle of the week.
PD, and then you're on vacation.
I know this year, it felt like every other week was a short week, for, there was a period of time where it just felt like the kid, my daughter was not going to school for, uh, and it was all around that Christmas break and her, her school stamina is what I, I felt like just fell off.
Right.
You know, cause she didn't have, for a long time, five-day weeks. And then when there was one, I could see by Friday, she was done. She was just like, I gotta go to school today?
I mean, I'm sure the parents would like that, I'm not sure the staff would be all that excited if, if there's not gonna be students to have them come in for one day at the end of the, at the end of a vacation. Um, you know, that's probably not gonna be popular, but, uh.
Sorry.
I understand the, it, I guess the point is, what, whatever we do, I mean, we can figure out the PD day.
Right.
Okay, but the question is whether or not there are no school days. I guess that's the question. Are, are January and third no school days for students?
Second and third.
Second and third, sorry, second and third.
I would like it to be school days personally.
Okay, other thoughts?
Thoughts?
This is one of the lovely jobs that the school committee gets to make decisions on, is.
I have to say, I don't feel strongly.
We're making recommendations?
I'm not, I don't. I don't feel strongly, I feel more strongly about not having school on the twenty-third than I do about whether they go to school on the second and third.
I have to agree with that. I think the second and third are really not an issue for me, but going back for a half-a-day the day before, a makes a holiday for.
We, we don't disagree with that. I'll be Christmas shopping, that's it. Cause I'm not an early shopper. I've, I've been out on Christmas Eve day, so. Okay, so, I, just, just getting, I mean, again, we don't have to vote on this tonight, people can think about it. But I'm just trying to get a little bit of a consensus on, so if there's other information that.
So, was the second and third, do people have strong feelings?
I really don't.
No, Rob?
Say if I did, but.
I don't know.
Okay, so, we'll leave it as it is for right now and then we can, uh, revisit that.
Why don't we revisit that for the next one?
Alright.
I was just gonna say, coming from students, they're always gonna want extra days off, so, I mean, don't, don't, um.
Don't go by the students.
Don't worry, don't worry.
We're not gonna ask you to pull your friends.
They also wanna be let out of, of school in June as early as possible, so.
I mean, it's a hundred and eighty days. That's important to the kids, let me just say that, but not, not, then it's not. No, 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 right, it is.
I know, everybody wants a snow day until they realize in June, and then.
It's eighty-five and we're sending them off to school.
Please do not call a snow day, no matter what, you know, 'cause there, everybody knows what it means.
Not June, right. Okay, so then the, the next thing um that I would mention is, um, there was a, we have had discussions, ongoing discussions with the teachers' union as part of their negotiations, um, that we, we, we wanna have additional time, and uh they have agreed to an additional six hours, um, so that can look like one full day, or it can look like, you know, a distribution of time over um a, over a period. So again, looking at all the options that we might have and looking at all of the initiatives that we know that we've got coming up, and I list some of them in your orange notes. Um, the thinking is that if we were to, throughout the year, the first few professional development days, and that's why I was talking about what I mentioned, Dan, about the fifteenth, where we really need to do work with teacher evaluation, and making sure we get teacher, teachers all trained and SMART goals and all the things that they need to do to be able to kick off that process. We feel like we need to front-load that in our September and October um time. So, um, after that, however, we, we do need time to be able to do this other work. So our thinking was, if we were to strategically select some half-days throughout the year, and we were to notify parents enough in advance, that what, what we could do is we could do an early release for students, but then the, the, the professional development would be for that three hours, but then in addition to that, the teachers would work an additional hour as the six hours that they've said they, they're willing to um put on the table. So, what it would do is it would take us from the three full days, which is about eighteen hours of professional development, to um an- another twenty-four hours of additional time, and it would be to work on, you know, developing those written curriculum, it would be to work on these vertical task forces, it would be to uh, you know, have teachers working on, you know, some things related to their evaluation. I, I'm not saying we would go with this kind of a system every year, but for this coming year, it, it really does seem like something we should try, um, because there really is a lot of work that needs to be done. And we don't have the money, by the way, to pay teachers to work, you know, hours on the, on the vacations and all that kind of thing, so it really does, and, and a lot of the work we're talking about has to be done by the teachers. And they already give time after school for meetings and other things, this is work that requires like a sustained amount of time to be working on it, like if you're sitting and you're developing units in Atlas, you, you, you can't just sit down for twenty minutes, work on it, get up through something, you have to have sustained amount of time. So, given the, that work, we're, we're making the recommendation that throughout the years, throughout the year, we add these half-day sessions.
And does half-day feel like a sufficient amount of sustained attention for those kinds of tasks?
If we look at, well, if we look at it as four hours, it does.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Yeah, if we look at it as four hours, it does, if it was an hour or an hour or two.
That was something that we talked about when we were talking about, when we negoti- when we're going through the, that block, just needing a block.
Right, right. And a four-hour block as opposed to an eight-hour block, is it feels appropriate?
Right, and, and some of this work that we would do would need, it would be beneficial to not be one day, it would be beneficial to be able to do some work every month on it and be able to, uh, over the course of the year, have some continuity. That's, you know, I mean, Julie's running a vertical team right now of language arts folks, and I mean, you know, aside from pulling them out of class and or having them, you know, work for hours after school or pay them in the summer to come, it's really str- it's really a struggle to get people to be able to come for sustained amount of times to get the work done, it's not their commitment isn't there, it's just, when do you do it?
Yeah.
So, this would afford us the opportunity to have some actual time that we could schedule, and we would have some reasonable assurance, we'd have the ability to get the work done. So, um, that's, you see those sort of sprinkled throughout. And then the other thing, more on professional development, is we had quite a bit of conversation about um putting a professional full day either on the Friday before a holiday or the Tuesday after a holiday. And we made the recommendation to do it on the Tuesdays, but that's up for discussion. Um, again, we, we sit in a different seat sometimes than parents sit in, and you represent in many ways, you know, how parents think, so if you have a thought one way or the other on that, you know, we'd be interested in hearing it.
My, I wasn't really concerned about the Fridays or the Tuesdays, that, uh, but, I mean, other people might be. I was just more concerned about the January, what January and February look like.
Yeah, the two, yeah, you mean the twenty-first and the fifth? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, real, I mean, really going back to school on the sixth and then having two full weeks, a partial week, a full week, a partial week, a full week, a vacation week.
It does look odd.
A full week, then a partial week, then we go straight.
But there's no other way to do the half-days, as you can see, that's the challenge, right?
Right, I, and I, I understand, I'm just saying, from a parent perspective, looking at that.
Well, that's why we're, we're doing it in advance and trying to make the argument that we know it's not optimal, but we're trying to figure out how we can get the time to do it.
Yeah.
There's so many, so many slots to pick from.
That's the problem.
Can anything get moved to March?
I mean, that's, uh, well, that's, that's a possibility, like if we have to move like January twenty-first, you know, that might be possible to move the, to move like into a full-day PD there, that could possibly happen.
Yep.
So, so would you like us to think about that, and then, since we're probably not gonna vote tonight, uh, which wasn't my intention.
Yeah.
Perhaps we could go back and think a little bit more about that, and um, and what else did I have to think about?
December vacation.
About December vacation, oh, a.
Christmas twenty-third.
Whether or not to go back.
Whether or not to go back the second and third.
Okay.
I, I don't believe.
I think I was the only one that showed concern.
I think that's more you guys, I think that's more you guys than what I would go back and do, but, but going back and looking at the distribution of those uh, full day and half-days, um, I think we, we could definitely.
If it would make the distribution better, then I would say go back on the second and third. That's just my.
I don't know that it does make it any better, but.
I, I do, I, I like.
I had the second and third, probably just moves up the last day of school, is that what?
Uh, what would happen in that case is it would be a one-day difference, because you're gonna now put the twenty-third back in as a school day.
As a.
I mean, as a vac- I mean, you're taking it out as a vacation day, um, so, yeah.
To put a half-day in somewhere, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll move.
I mean, I, I like the idea of two weeks, two straight weeks off, um, but what I don't like is how January and February looks, so it's just don't, that's right kinda trouble.
Okay, I can take that.
I, I, I'm with you too, and I would even venture to say, but this is just me, and I probably do winter holidays different from others. The, I wouldn't even mind if the twentieth was a half-day, but, and the twenty-third was a no-school day.
Are you talking, are you talking December?
December twenty.
Say that again, you would say.
Say, we have a half-day on December twenty-third, but if we make that a vacation day.
Yep.
And make the twentieth a half-day, because, again, I'm, I'm just thinking in terms of how the students are at this time, how kids are at this time of year. They're excited about the ho- the winter holiday, and they're, so, so then on the twentieth, you know, you have all your school parties in the morning, the kids aren't gonna do anything anyway, and then they get to go home on half a day, and then they're home with their parents for two weeks.
But then would you, would you then, would you then change, what would you do on the second and third then, if you gave, 'cause now we're.
So that.
Now we're increasing the amount of time.
That I don't feel strongly about either way, the second and third, and.
Okay. Okay, that, that, I mean, that, that, that's an interesting idea is to put that half-day there on the twentieth. It's a more logical break.
Yep. Or, or do parents preparing for the holidays need to have their children in school so that they can?
Well, that's not really.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
What we're thinking about. Really, you're charging, it's a factor, I, I get it.
That's why I had to say, I probably do December holidays a little differently than it, and some people probably want their kids in school on the twenty-third.
I'm sure they'll be here, yeah.
All right, so.
Okay, so, yeah, we'll do that, and we'll come back to the next meeting, and hopefully we'll have everyone happy. And if in the meantime, you have some thoughts on it individually, please feel free to drop me an email or give me a call, so we can note factor in your, your thoughts, all right?
All right, moving right along.
Thank you for your time. Julie, Julie, come on up.
Oh, one of my favorites, a writing initiative.
I know, this is the Ian Blythe agenda item.
I loved this, looking at this, because I love writing too.
Oh, yes. Welcome, Julie.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, you all have this in your packets, and I wanted to put it together, I thought of a few different ways to organize my thinking um, on what we're doing in the district for writing, and um, we could've gone the PowerPoint route, but we thought, you've probably seen enough of that lately. Um, and we also wanted to have something that we could share with teachers, I shared this with my ELA vertical team on Monday, um, and, you know, also something we could put on the website to give people a little bit more insight in terms of what we're working on as a district and what we're looking at. So the first page really dealt um with some research, uh, we're pretty heavily um assessing the research that's out there on writing and, and what we're doing and how we're doing it and, and what the experts are saying. And we organized it in a framework, hopefully that was easy for you to understand, the elementary, the middle and high school, because the skill sets are different um at each particular section, if you wanna think of it that way, um, of schooling. And um, so, but you can see where they all build on each other as well, so you have to have those foundational skills so that you can excel at this, at the skill of writing over time and across content. And so, I was hoping that you, you've got that um, that piece out of it and you weren't, you know, it wasn't too humdrum, I was a little concerned about that. I do love research, I mean, people aren't as excited about it as I am, but.
Yeah, I, I worked it too, yeah.
I was very excited about it.
But I'm glad, I'm glad. And so this year, we had a, a pretty um intense focus on writing, uh, it's part of our district and strategic plan, and um, and part of each school's plan, if you think of, if you think back to the presentations that the principals gave, um, it's something that we've all focused on.
Right.
Yes, and it's part of our high school mission statement, yeah, absolutely, um, and so, it's a very important skill um, that we were hyper-focusing on right now, but we don't intend to lose sight of either. So it's, it's right here in front of us, and it's something that we're working on through our ELA vertical work, but also teachers are working on this every day, we've had a lot of professional development around this. Uh, we're looking at our, our units of study and aligning to the new frameworks and assessing what those expectations are and, and how what we do fits into those uh new state expectations. And um, we're feeling good about it, I mean, it's good work, it's enjoyable work, and the teachers have done incredible things, the principals have been very supportive. Um, our professional development providers have been right on the money uh, in terms of, of the instruction that our teachers are receiving, but also answering questions and helping to build over time um, a depth of knowledge that, that we want our teachers to have, but also um, that we wanna have ourselves, that when we're talking about it and thinking about it, we understand how writing impacts our kids in so many ways, you know that. Um, it, it's something that, that, it's a skill that, that we wanna see grow over time, um, and, and we want our children to be better at it and more, um, and write for a variety of genres and feel skilled and comfortable with that.
It's cross-curricular.
I was gonna say, and it's, and it transcends the curriculum.
Oh, in every way, in every way, that's the one skill, I think, in, with reading, right, that transfers into every content.
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, one of the battles you have with kids is, well, I don't have to worry about it, it's only my science, whatever, and it's like, no, you know, it, you have to, it has.
You write in every subject.
Well, the grammar never takes a vacation.
Yes, that's right.
The one thought that came to my mind as I was reviewing this, um, was what kind of, um, I suppose, support or instruction or professional development with regards to writing are teachers getting for addressing the different learning styles of the students in their classroom? Because this seemed to cover, you know, understanding writing, understanding what the children need to know, but I think that, that there's, you know, this diversity of learners in any classroom, and the pathway um, to getting to, to understanding one of these are, are, can be quite diverse, and I was just wondering if, if teachers are getting that.
That type of work as well.
Yeah, that breadth of understanding about, you know, how to accomplish this in a classroom with a lot of diverse.
And that's definitely. If you think about yourself as a writer, you have to, you have to think about how you'll process an assignment, if we wanna think of it in terms of an assignment, and we will all probably go about it differently. You may be a person that really needs to organize it, I have to highlight and take notes on the side, and this is the way I think and, and how I do things, but you may have to create a graphic organizer or just start writing. Um, and so that is definitely something we have been working on and will continue to work on, next year we wanna work a little bit more deeply in those areas and looking at student work, and trying to understand that we may not all come to it the same way, but we still have the same skills.
End goal, but we have these many paths to getting there.
Yeah, and our process, our whole focus of writing is on the writing process.
Right.
So, you know, teachers are taught through their training to, you know, how do, you know, what are the stages of a writing lesson and a good writing de- development?
Absolutely.
What do good writers do? How do, how are we um making sure we're modeling for students? You know, we have this document that we've been working on that um really, I think, describes the, the expectations in the process for how is, if you teach it through a process, you're gonna be able to meet the needs of your learners. If you just say, this is the assignment and this is the one way that you can do it, that's where you run into having more difficulty with that, but if you teach it through a process, and, and you're conferencing and you're, you know, you're dealing with it through the process, you're more likely to be able to differentiate for the students that need it. And that is the focus of how we're training our teachers.
I also love the focus on the community of writers at the elementary school level, because, you know, helping students to feel safe writing, putting down their ideas is, you know, that you need to build their confidence, that they have good ideas, no matter, you know, how diverse they may be. And that, that's the foundation, I think, if, if a student doesn't feel confident in their ideas, it's gonna be a lot harder to get those down on paper.
Um, when the students go home, you know, at home, they've got a task, a writing task to do, and perhaps they're getting a lot of support in the classroom, on the one hand, okay, so you, you, but a parent doesn't know, a parent just sees, this is, this is where you're expected to be, um, so I think there might also be a need, I don't. My sense is that what happens in classrooms today around writing is radically different from probably what a lot of parents experienced as students, and so, they may have this expectation, this is how I did it, so this is how you're gonna do it.
Yeah.
And I think we, we, this says to me, you know, we're really embracing this diversity of pathways and knowing these different steps in the writing process, so. So that kids aren't getting mixed messages and getting confused about what am I doing and trying to please my mom and trying to please my teacher.
Well, that, I'm afraid, our writing program's not going to fix.
That's the perennial problem.
That, that is a, that is a big challenge, um, I, I face that with my own kids, my, you know, my, my teacher knows, you know. But part of what I've seen in classrooms as I've been walking through, and I did a walkthrough at Pembroke the other day, and I, it was just so wonderful to see the engagement of the students, and that the students, when I sat with them and said, they were talking about public service announcements that they had to do, and they were able to, they controlled the process, the teachers were really facilitating and talking to individual students and, in some cases, steering the whole class, but those kids knew what their job was and why they were doing what they were doing and what their process was and how they were making decisions as writers about what went on the paper, that's what you ideally want.
Yeah.
But, and we, we have done many trainings for parents and we will never stop trying it, but I can tell you that they don't come. If you do a family literacy where you're playing games with the children and there's food and, you know, all that, you're more likely to get them to come, but generally speaking, when we've offered parent education, there's more teachers there than there are parents. Now, I'm not saying we should stop doing that, we've been talking about, can we do webcasts and put them up on our website so parents can click on and say, okay, this is what a writing, this is how we teach writing, here's a writing lesson.
Well, and this is what a writing classroom looks like, because to some parents, a writing classroom might look like chaos, and the teacher has no control over these kids, and, and I, I think that there's a good deal, I mean, probably as administrators, you needed to be trained in how to look at what's effective in a writing classroom.
Sure.
And, um, so then the next level is, how do you convey that to a parent who walks through the school and says, it looks crazy in that room, you know, those kids are all talking, and even though what they're doing is conferencing with each other and making suggestions and moving, I think.
And I think for us to get information out there is what we're working on, so that people understand this, it may look messy at times, however, we have a lot, there is a lot going on, and, and this is how we, we develop good writers and.
But we don't expect parents to educate their children the same way that the classroom teacher's gonna do it during the day. So we understand that there may be times when there's that tension, and I, we encourage parents to let the child, you know, you just, you kinda take the lead, you know, and that you wanna help them and assist them, but we, we don't expect it to be a battle. And we certainly don't want the parent, like, being responsible for the work, 'cause, you know, that can be a tendency too, right?
You know, and I, I don't know, does, at Pembroke, this is the first year, I don't have a child in Pembroke, and it still makes me sad. But um, are they, are you still doing WPP for homework?
Donna, you're not doing WPPs for homework, or are you?
Yes.
WPP for homework, one in grades four or five.
Oh, four and five, okay, and I remember there was a lot of parent instruction, you know, there were workbooks, and there was all kinds of ways to help parents understand how to best help their children with that.
It's hard, it's, it's.
But, I mean, parents still had questions, but there, there was, there were resources.
But we know that's part of what we need to do, is continue to put education into it.
And one of the things I can, middle, I can say from personal experience, in middle school, I have three boys that had the same middle school English teacher, they're vastly different writers. I have two that are very, very wordy and descriptive, and one that, if you have, if you wanna put,
Say it as short as you can.
If you give him a topic sentence, he can, he feels that he gets it covered in about three sentences, and he's done. But the way that this teacher explains it, I mean, he goes to the whole graphic organizer and gets, but all three of them, like, have different approaches, so.
Uh, because I think writing is so individualized.
But they have the tools that they each need.
They know that they can, that's right.
Right.
Tap into this skill set, and this is how I'll get it done.
What is a graphic organizer?
It, it's sometimes, it, you know, it can be a lot of different things, but it's an organizational tool, so you will have, if you're gonna write a, let's say, a five-paragraph essay. it's a visual for a student. So the first box might say, first paragraph, topic, sentence. And then details would be the second box and then.
Could be a web.
It could be a web. It, it could be.
There's a whole bunch of graphics.
It's an outline or, you know, it's.
Yeah, it could be anything, but it's a shape. Generally speaking, it's a visually organized tool to help students come to it. Not so that they're writing right off the bat the topic sentence. They're organizing their thoughts around the process first.
How do you identify one student versus another and?
Well, they're all different. You have to know your students. You have to know your students.
But how do you, how do you?
It's working with them, conferencing, understanding where their strengths and weaknesses are. Just by their nature, are they the student that won't pick up a pencil until, you know, they've thought it through? It's really paying very close attention to where your students are in the process and knowing them as best you can.
As coach or facilitator.
It's keeping work in the classroom.
Talk in front of the classroom. It's a really different way. It's a just, it's, it's.
You have to know.
The definition of teacher just changes.
You have to know your students.
You have to know what kids, you have to know what students need to know and be able to do. Then you have to look at the learners in your room. And what you do is you teach these skills and strategies and then you can quickly figure out which kids gravitate toward, you know, there are some, I'm a very visual person. That's why I take the notes and everybody's, and I don't even look at the notes after the fact, but the fact that I write it helps me remember it. So I, I know Julie has a different style perhaps, but, you know, I might immediately go to a graphic organizer and she may never use a graphic organizer. She may draft and draft and draft. But, you know, we, we give them tools and then they make decisions about, you know, they put their, they learn what writers do. And we use models of good literature when, and like I want to talk about leads, we pick some books that have great leads and get them to think about what makes this such a good lead. And then they have a chance to try out the leads in their work.
All right.
Sounds like I'm just telling them what.
So I mean, Julie, Julie did lay out the next steps here. Does anybody have any specific questions or anything else that you?
No, I really like it.
I'm so happy. I love it too.
I've been waiting for five years for it.
I know you have, so. And I keep telling you, it's a process, yeah. It's a process. And Donna, you've got the science curriculum before she left and now you've got some writing information.
I got the writing readiness.
A name to please. Thank you, Julie.
Great, thank you very much, Julie. Appreciate it. Moving right along. Superintendent's information for the committee?
No, I just would mention the MAS Day on the Hill.
Day on the Hill got canceled.
Yeah, I know. It's being rescheduled though.
Yeah, but I liked the letter they sent out saying it was a perfect storm of why they couldn't have it.
Yes.
Let's see, and then the financial report for the town is really interesting, if anyone has a chance to read it.
Very interesting, very interesting.
So I thought that was nice and.
Yeah, I wanted you to have that. Mike gave it to the department heads and I thought it was interesting.
Yeah. Um, all right, financial report, line item transfers. Let's see, any questions on those? Chair will entertain a motion to approve line item transfers numbered one ninety-one through two thousand, through two hundred eighteen as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is budget and finance. Yes.
Um, you have, you have your reports. The, the Munis budget report. What I would like to say is that this past week we implemented a budget freeze. We have a couple of pending special ed placements we're waiting on right now. So we decided that, to be safe, because we really don't have any place to go in the budget at this late date besides tapping the school budget. So we put a spending freeze in place. If people need stuff to complete their initiatives, whatever, they're just emailing me. I give them approval based on what the, you know, the request is. And they do have money in their lines and if we don't need it, if Donna comes to me and says this placement isn't taking place, then we'll lift the freeze and they can go back to utilizing their monies. What you'll notice on the first page is that right at the bottom, the special ed tuition contingency line, which is the last line on this front page, we've tapped it all except six hundred and twenty-nine dollars of the two fifty.
So that's the, that was what we asked for in Fall Town meeting.
Right, and we reported that to the finance committee last week, so they're aware of it.
So, and even with that two fifty way of spending, we have a spending freeze.
Yes, because it's a couple of placements. But what I don't want you to worry about is if you look at the bottom line, this says it's thirty-one thousand dollars. And if you look at the special ed outside placement line, we're in the negative two hundred and forty-six thousand.
You haven't applied circuit breaker yet.
We haven't done anything with circuit breaker. We're waiting. And we have, I don't know, three hundred and twenty thousand in circuit breaker right now. So I'm a little worried because we don't encumber substitutes and student activity. So, you know, the thirty-one thousand isn't enough to get us through the end of the year. And it, you know, we will apply circuit breaker, but I just felt like at this point.
It's more, it's more just to be conservative.
Right.
What are we talking about for two placements?
Donna has had a couple of team meetings that may result in a placement or a change in a placement. It might cost us more transportation costs.
Is it hundreds of thousands, tens of thousands?
I don't think it's hundreds of thousands.
No, it's not hundreds of thousands. No, no. I, I, I didn't have that conversation. Joan did, so I, I'm not even sure what student she's talking about. But it, it would have to, at this time of the year, remember, there's only a little bit of the year left. So the amount of money would, even if a placement was made, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a full amount. It would be the next year's budget that would be impacted.
Yeah.
But this year it would be a minimal cost.
And bear in mind, we usually have spending freezes in.
October, I was told.
Yeah, I was told, I was thinking Thanksgiving, so, yeah.
I thought they were all set until we had that meeting Tuesday.
This isn't a spending freeze as far as like the coffee machines and stuff, like no toner and things like that.
No, 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 no.
If you, if you, if you flip through this, there's, there's still money in textbooks. You know what? We're not buying textbooks now, so typically they start transferring their money around and using it in different ways. And I just ask them to please not do that. If there's something they need to complete an initiative, Donna Tanna sent me a couple of emails today. She has some art thing this coming week. She needed to spend money, obviously. She needed to spend her money, of course, she could spend her money. But if we could wait on some purchases that, you know, to complete our safety and security thing, we were trying to buy some monitors, so we just, you know, we have older monitors. We're sitting on it until we know that we have the money.
Right.
I like the conservative approach.
Yes, thank you very much.
We don't like the word freeze, but.
No, I know. We used to call it a chill.
Yeah, I, I, I tried the chill, but they, she goes, no, it's a freeze.
I'm like, okay, fine.
So budget and finance, I guess we're all set. There's nothing.
Yeah, we're all set. We met, we met with the finance committee.
And we're waiting to hear back.
Yes.
Governance?
Um, let's see, governance, we just met on the twenty-seventh and we discussed head lice policy of which we, we're looking at Beverly's policy, which was put together by Catherine Riccio. And we all liked that, so Carol's going to write up a draft and then we're going to have that available for the school committee to review on April eleventh.
It would be a distribution.
A distribution.
It's a new policy.
Right, right.
So we wouldn't comment on it unless you had things, it would really be in your packet for your review.
Right.
Negotiating?
We met last night with GSA and things are going well.
I think the GSA, we have a tentative agreement.
Okay. So we need executive session next meeting?
What I've asked them to do is to try to make sure it's here, that, so what you'll get in, in terms of a tentative agreement is a, just a summary of the major points that were agreed to, the salary scale. We complete, last night we worked on job descriptions and I've, I fixed those up today and sent them out for their review. So we're, we're really trying to work on getting it in the packet for the eleventh. And then you would have an executive session.
Okay.
Oh, one thing though, Anne. One of the things we talked about last night, they're, they're thinking they're gonna struggle to get all of the information to their people and fully discuss, because there are some significant changes for some pieces of that unit, of the union. So oftentimes you have the union ratify and then the school committee ratifies. But it may work, it may, because you're gonna have to talk about the teacher's contract probably on the twenty-fifth. And to do both of those in executive session is really a lot to have you be able to go through. So if we can be okay with potentially ratifying on the eleventh, even if the teachers or the aides haven't ratified, you know, I think that's fine in the process.
We can review it and then approve it in.
And contingent on.
In concept, contingent upon the final language, like we did.
Well, you'll have the final language.
Okay.
But it's more generally labor, um, labor ratifies before management, right? But I, I think it's, it's going, it's going to work out fine. I mean, you can, if they don't ratify, then obviously we go back to the drawing board. But I, I'd really appreciate it if, if we can get everything ready for the eleventh to have the opportunity to do that.
PR?
Yes, we met on March twenty-second and we have another meeting scheduled for April fifth. We primarily discussed the website and, you know, we talked about how the website is a living, breathing entity and, and we're just trying to continue, continually improve it and make it more user friendly.
All right, safety?
We've not had a safety meeting since the last school committee meeting.
All right, school building, are we?
I don't, I think the only thing I just wanted, and Ellie talked about it, was the joint meeting that's coming up with the GAA Park and Rec and Concom. And that's April third, Pembroke Library, seven PM. And that's just to review those athletic fields.
Right. Uh, old business, Baker Adams deliberation meeting rescheduled. Oh.
That has to do with, Rob can't make it.
Yeah, Rob has a conflict.
So the question is, do, does the committee want to come up potentially?
She does want to do a new date.
Yeah, we want to do a new date so everybody can be part of it.
One can.
But do you want to have, do you want to have Laura pull you, because I'm also thinking.
Yeah, why doesn't?
I'm thinking Lorene, we would, although we, we probably can't wait to find out whether the new person is gonna, whoever's gonna be on is.
So you're gonna get the, why don't you forward Laura dates that you can or absolutely cannot do? But you'll.
When is the, what is the window?
You're gonna get the, um, the application packages on March, on May tenth.
May tenth. And we have to have.
You need a full week. I mean, I, I think you're gonna need a, we talked about needing a full week.
Right, to review them.
So.
So when do we have to actually have the decision made?
You have to have the decision just made by graduation. So June eighth.
Is June eighth.
But you'd want to have it a little bit before.
Yeah. I mean.
Prepare all the.
Right.
So you have the latest.
Tuesday, June fourth, wouldn't you think?
Okay.
So March twentieth was the original, May twentieth was the original date.
Right.
Yep. So.
So, so is there anything the following week? People could do, let's see.
Memorial Day on the twenty-third.
So May tw- or, okay, so you need it till the seventeenth. Let's just see here.
I could do the twenty-second and the twenty-ninth, which is a Wednesday.
There's a high school chorus concert on the twenty-second. I could do the twenty-ninth.
I can't remember your dates.
Uh, let's see.
I could do the twenty-ninth, not the twenty-second.
I think Rob is out twenty.
One day, I'm out twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two.
So are you around on the twenty-ninth, Rob?
Yes.
What about you, Barbie?
Twenty-nine works for me.
Twenty-nine, what about you, Pam?
Sounds good.
What about you, Alana?
Twenty-nine works for me.
Let's book it while we can.
All right. Done.
Book it, Dan, all right. All right, so that's Baker Adams, right?
What day of the week is that?
Wednesday.
It will be early.
Early.
Early, okay.
Seven? Or earlier?
Uh, well, you tell me, Anne. That is good? Okay. All right.
All right.
Wonderful.
All right, new business. We have middle school donation from the PTA. Once again, they're donating for the jump up and go program. Um, which they've been doing for a number of years now, which I think is really well timed.
It's a great, it's a great.
Yeah, it's nice. Um, so the chair will entertain a motion to accept a seven hundred eighty-seven dollar fifty cent donation from the Georgetown PTA with gratitude.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I forgot discussion, but motion carries. Um, next up is a donation from Mr. Scott Jones. And this I found kind of interesting just because I'm not a engineering person at all. So he donated supplies he used from a class that he taught to Cub Scouts. And it includes pulleys, weights, gauges and electronic kits.
Yeah, the pictures are in here.
It's pretty cool.
Very cool.
Really cool stuff.
Um, and thank, nice of him to think of the schools. So the chair will entertain a motion to accept the science supplies donation from Mr. Scott Jones with gratitude.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Once again, thank you to everyone that continuously donates either, you know, time, money or, um, things like the science kit. It's very thoughtful and greatly appreciated.
Hey, could I just add one quick, quick, quick thing? I forgot to do this, but I think it's important is, um, the DECA kids went to the national, went to the States, remember?
Yes.
So, um, Lisa Ryer sent me a little note today saying the following students are going to the Nationals. Ryan Bahar, Katie DeMa- DeMeo, John Max Howland, Rory Kavanaugh, Jeremy McFadden, Joey Torgerson, Nick Bobio, Chelsea Burke and, and Kitty Trugilio. Now, a couple, a couple of them aren't able to go, but they, they made it. I guess that's the point. And I, I think that's.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to Mrs. Ryer and the DECA area.
It's an amazing accomplishment. And I really, I, I'm just so glad I thought of it.
Where is Nationals?
Um, where does she?
Anaheim, California.
Anaheim, California.
Congratulations.
I went to Boston to be a judge at the state level and there was a lot of competition.
Yes, there was a lot of competition, let me tell you.
So she'll be here soon and asking for.
Students.
I think that's phenomenal. How many was that, like ten?
Let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
That's fantastic.
Going to Nationals for.
Yeah, out of Georgetown.
Out of Georgetown. Again, four hundred students in the entire high school.
And I think there were thirty-six that went to districts and then I think there were like twenty, twenty, twenty-six of them placed. I mean, it's an, it's an amazing accomplishment.
Those are usually, what, just juniors and seniors?
Juniors and seniors, because you have to have taken a business class. I think there's sophomores now you might be able to.
I think a couple sophomores, not a lot, but a very few.
Great.
Well, anyway, thank you, Anne, for giving me that minute to.
No, congratulations to everybody. Couple of reminders, Middle School Play next Friday, April fifth at seven and Saturday, April sixth at two o'clock at the Middle High School Auditorium.
Yes.
Um, the GEF Gala is next Saturday, April sixth at the Black Swan. And then there is the field discussion at Pembroke. Um, and that's a joint meeting on Wednesday, April third at seven PM.
Great.
All right, so chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a happy Easter every year.
Oh, yes, happy Easter.
I dare say that, huh?
Yeah, it's all right.